Welcome everyone to our Provo Municipal Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September fifteenth, 2020, and it is 5:31 PM. This meeting will be conducted entirely via electronic means. On September eighth, 2020, in accordance with Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh seven four, Council Chair George Handley determined that conducting meetings of the municipal council with an anchor location such as the municipal council chamber presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present there. These are the facts upon which I have made this determination. Utah has been in a declared state of emergency due to COVID-19 since March sixth, 2020, a disease outbreak which the World Health Organization has characterized as a pandemic. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention state that COVID-19 is easily spread from person to person between people who are in close contact with one another. The spread is through respiratory droplets when an infected person coughs, sneezes, or talks, and it may be spread by people who are non-symptomatic. Federal, state, and local authorities have recommended that individuals limit public gatherings, wear face masks, and follow social distancing guidelines. The Provo City Council has adopted a local mask requirement in indoor areas accessible to the public, including without limitation businesses and city buildings where social distancing is not possible, reasonable, or prudent. As reported by the Utah Department of Health, reported COVID-19 cases, as measured by the number of cases per one hundred thousand people in Provo continue to rise at a significantly higher rate than reported rates for the county and the state. Physical distancing measures will be difficult to set up and maintain in the Provo Municipal Council Chamber as well. Additionally, the Chair of the Governing Board of the Redevelopment Agency of Provo City has determined that its meetings are subject to the same risks and has adopted the same procedures as the municipal council. The meeting will be available to the public for live broadcast and on-demand viewing at youtube.com/provocitycouncil. The council requests that attendees help maintain the decorum of the meeting by silencing electronic devices, being respectful to others, and by waiting to speak until called on by the council chair. In the current situation where the meeting is being held via Zoom webinar and broadcast over YouTube, I remind you to turn off your mics when not speaking so as to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up, recorded, and broadcast for all to hear. Begin with a roll call of those who are present. Identify my, our council. I am George Handley, Council Chair, and joined by Dave Harding, Vice Chair, Dave Shipley, Counselor Dave Sewell, Counselor Shannon Ellsworth, Counselor Bill Fillmore, Counselor, and Travis Hoben, Counselor. And we're also joined by the Mayor, Michelle Kafusi, and by Wayne Parker, Chief Administrative Officer, Cliff Strachan, our Council Executive Director, and Brian Jones, our Council Attorney. And we will be joined by other staff members and are supported by other staff members as well during this meeting. We'll begin with an opening prayer that will be given by Travis Hoben, after which we'll have a pledge of allegiance that will be provided by Shannon Ellsworth.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful that we have this opportunity to serve the people of Provo. We're grateful that we have the opportunity to use our talents and our skills and our backgrounds and experiences to try to make good decisions, to do what we think is right. We ask for that guidance to rest upon us tonight. We ask that people from, people of Provo from the public will be inspired to call in and engage with us and share their wisdom as well. And we ask for a blessing on all those locally and nationally who are trying to lead, lead us and through these interesting times. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Ellsworth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge two employees of the city who have retired after many, many decades of valiant service to the city. Dave Graves served for many decades, many years, as our city engineer in Provo. He retired last month, and today, Robert West, our city attorney, is retiring after, I've heard, thirty-six years of service. Robert West will be temporarily replaced by Brian Jones, our council attorney, who will serve simultaneously as interim city attorney. And Dave Decker, our Public Works Director, will be serving as our interim city engineer as well until further notice. But we're grateful for these two wonderful men and their service to our city after so many years. We'll begin with a presentation of the 2020 Best of State Award that was given to Provo Parks and Recreation, and this will be introduced by Mayor Kafusi and Scott Henderson, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure to be here. I am here with one of my favorite directors, Scott Henderson, who is the Director over our Parks and Rec Department. Scott's leadership has been nothing but, he expects almost perfection, and he gets it because his expectations, the way he leads, the motivation, the positive attitude, and the little piece of fun he tends to always throw in makes his employees want to do their best work and best effort. And I cannot think of anyone more deserving to receive this award, Best in State Award, than our Director Scott Henderson. So it's my honor and privilege, first of all, to work with him, and second of all, to have him running the best recreation center in the nation. So congratulations, Scott, on your Best of State.
Well, thank you, Mayor Kafusi, for those kind words about me and this department that completely holds me up and covers for my lack of talent in many areas. But a big thank you also to the Mayor's Office and the municipal council. As talented as our staff is in Parks and Recreation, we could not create this success story without your support and our wonderful citizens. Provo Parks and Recreation leads the industry nationally in performance management, efficiency, and cutting-edge concepts. These types of awards are important to us because, number one, we earn them through hard work, and number two, it shows our unique status in this industry. And let me assure you that we're not done yet in Provo Parks and Recreation. We operate under the premise that Provo citizens deserve the best. And here's a little peek into the future, even though we're talking about it, award it right now. Over the next months and year, we'll be opening a reimagined and revolutionary golf facility. That's actually going to happen the end of this month. We will be opening an unlimited play center for children of all cognitive and physical abilities at North Park. We will improve and expand our popular trail systems. We're adding aquatic and gym amenities at the rec center right now as we speak. We're creating the show baseball complex to treat our youth baseball players like major leaguers. Rock Canyon Gateway will receive improvements over the next year. And there's more, but I couldn't fit these, all the list in there in the timeframe that we have today. But finally, this next month, we will establish Provo Parks and Recreation as literally the best of the best nationally by achieving rare accreditation for our department. We went through a major process earlier in this year, and it was intense. But our score is, was ninety-eight out of a hundred in meeting the accreditation standards. And it took a ton of work. So if I don't blow it in the final meeting with the evaluation group, then we should have a really chance to see you soon to celebrate this accomplishment also. To finish out, we have a video that both celebrates the award that we're receiving today and gives everyone a sneak peek into what Provo Parks and Recreation looks and feels like. Well, thank you very much for being part of the production today. I'm glad our audience participation was a hundred percent. But thanks again for all your support and what you've done for the Provo Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you for all your work and all of your staff, all the wonderful people associated with you. It's all very well deserved, and we're proud to wear the shirt to prove it. All right. Well, thank you for that wonderful video as well. All right, we'll be, continue now with item number two, which is a presentation of the Provo City Justice Court Annual Report. This will be presented by Judge Vernon F. Romney. We're glad to have you with us.
Thank you very much. I hope I'm connected.
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. Thank you for the chance to present our annual report on the Provo City Justice Court. I'm honored to work with Rihanna Newton, our court administrator, our wonderful staff, the Justice Court. They are dedicated, professional, and courteous, and they fulfill the motto of the Justice Courts, which is to improve the quality of life in our community, especially during the restrictions of the coronavirus pandemic. In all my previous reports to the council, I've reported on the results of our customer service survey. These surveys are taken during the summer, and we've been gratified both by those results, which show that the court customers are pleased with the service they receive in our court. This year, for obvious reasons, we were unable to complete the customer service survey, given the pandemic and the restrictions we are under. As has been noted, the World Health Organization has declared the COVID-19 outbreak to be a pandemic, and Governor Herbert has declared a state of emergency. As the number of cases continued to accelerate, and as there was a threat in some areas to overwhelm the healthcare system, the State Administrative Office of the Courts developed a COVID-19 response team to deal with the court's response to the pandemic. This team, along with work groups made up of judges and trial court executives from each court level in Utah, developed a risk response plan that sets forth safety and operational requirements for the courts. The risk phases for the courts are not the same as the governor's risk phases. The courts created a pandemic response plan in September two thousand nine and adopted the color-coded risk phases of red, yellow, and green. The court's plan took into account the governor's color-coded risk phases as it considered court operations, but the court's plan took a more cautious approach. This more cautious approach was chosen because among the three branches of government, the courts have the power to compel people to appear in court either for a hearing or for jury service under penalty of law. Currently, almost all court locations are operating under the red phase of the pandemic plan. This means that critical court functions continue, and courts are conducting many other criminal and civil proceedings, but most hearings are being held remotely. Jury trials will not resume until a court moves into the yellow phase, and then only if strict safety protocols are followed. The risk response plan lays out a process through which courts in a county may seek approval from the judicial council to move into the yellow phase. The judicial council will approve the request to move to yellow phase when the local health department confirms that the rate of transmissions of COVID-19 for the county in which the court is located is consistently decreasing or is stable at a level well below the level that would overwhelm the Utah healthcare system. Courts can resume in-person operations under the yellow phase if the appropriate safeguards outlined in the risk response plan are followed. You may be interested to know that the plan of our Provo City Justice Court to move to yellow phase will be considered by the Management Committee of the Utah Judicial Council at a meeting tomorrow morning. Based on recommendations from the state health officials, the courts do not anticipate any court transitioning to the green phase in the foreseeable future. We are, in our court, currently operating under an administrative order of Utah Supreme Court Chief Justice Matthew Durant dated June twenty-sixth, 2020. Under that order, and absent exigent circumstances, all court hearings are conducted on the papers or through remote transmission, such as by video or telephone, rather, or video conferencing. Any in-person hearing is conducted consistently with all applicable government and public health orders, the court's pandemic response plan, and the risk response plan. Our Justice Court continues to perform all mission-critical functions for defendants who are in custody. These include probable cause review of warrantless arrests, bail hearings, bench warrant hearings, arraignments, appearances mandated by statute, and sentencing hearings. We are conducting other proceedings by remote transmission. We are permitted to conduct bench trials by remote transmission with the consent of all the parties to the case or without a party's consent if the court determines that consent has been unreasonably withheld. When we are permitted to operate in the yellow phase, we must continue to perform all mission-critical functions for in custody defendants. In the yellow phase, we will be permitted to conduct proceedings in person or by remote transmission, including bench and jury trials. If the proceedings comply with all applicable government and public health orders, the court's pandemic response plan and the risk response plan. Any justice court that fails to remain open and provide services in accordance with the administrative order is subject to decertification by the judicial council. Justice courts have jurisdiction over Class B and C misdemeanors and infractions committed within the territorial jurisdiction of the court. Some of these common offenses include first and second offense DUI charges, domestic violence offenses, theft, marijuana possession, possession of drug paraphernalia, intoxication, disorderly conduct, and others. In fiscal year 2020, which ended on June thirtieth of this year, there was, in the justice courts, there were sixty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-five criminal cases filed. There were nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty small claims cases filed in justice courts during that year, as well as three hundred and five thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight traffic cases, all of these filed in Utah's justice courts. In comparison, during fiscal year 2020, there were forty-one thousand, six hundred and five criminal cases filed in the Utah District Courts. These cases in the district courts included felony charges, misdemeanor charges, and infraction violations. Utah's justice courts handle over sixty percent of all cases filed in Utah, and most Utahns' experience with the courts is at the justice court level. For your reference, our case filing numbers in the Provo City Justice Court in fiscal year 2020 included two thousand four criminal cases, one thousand thirty-five small claims cases, and eight thousand forty-four traffic cases. The total number of cases filed during fiscal year 2020 was eleven thousand, eighty-three. The criminal cases in justice court take up the largest part of the judge's time. These cases are governed by the Utah Rules of Criminal Procedure. A defendant's rights are guaranteed under both the United States and the Utah constitutions, and they include the right to be represented by counsel and the right to a jury trial. Most of these criminal cases are resolved by plea agreements, while the trials can either be to the bench, which means that the judge determines the question of guilty or not guilty, or to a jury, in which case the jury makes that determination. Treatment plays a vital role in our criminal justice system in our efforts to reduce recidivism or repeat offenses, and in our efforts to reduce crime. Many of the defendants sentenced in our justice court are required to obtain a screening and an assessment in cases in which they are convicted of possession of drugs, drug paraphernalia, DUI, and domestic violence. That screening and assessment determine whether treatment should be required as part of the defendant's sentence to enable the defendant to receive help on an underlying drug, alcohol, or domestic violence problem, and to avoid further offenses related to the problem. Other defendants may be required to attend a thinking errors class, which addresses underlying critical errors in thinking, to correct those errors and avoid further criminal behavior. Treatment is also critical in the area of mental health. The jails and prisons in our state and our country have become de facto mental institutions, housing more people affected by mental illness or mental conditions than do our state-funded mental hospitals. This presents many challenges for our court system and for everyone in our communities. Our mental health court program in the Provo City Justice Court has been with us since its inception in two thousand and seven and has been very successful in reducing repeat offenses. This program operates on a plea and advance model. The defendants in this program plead either guilty or no contest. That plea is held in suspension while they complete the requirements of mental health court. Those requirements include that the defendants remain medication and mental health treatment compliant, that they have no intervening criminal offenses, and that they successfully complete the requirements at each level of the court. When they satisfactorily complete mental health court, their charges are ordered dismissed. This problem-solving court has been effective in reducing the number of jail days which these participants would otherwise spend. We have also had a domestic violence calendar in place in our court since its inception. These cases are generally heard each Wednesday morning. This calendar helps facilitate resolution of these cases, which cause so many problems in families and in our community. This year, 2020, which granted women the right to vote. Suffragists began their organized fight for women's equality in eighteen forty-eight when they demanded the right to vote during the first women's right. the right to vote during the first Women's Rights Convention in Seneca Falls, New York. During the following 72 years, women leaders lobbied, picketed, marched, and protested for the right to the ballot. In 1870, Wyoming was the first territory to allow women to vote. It then followed that right by appointing the first female judicial officer, bailiff, and first female jurors. In 1890, Colorado, Idaho, and California granted women the right to vote. The U.S. House of Representatives approved what was called the Susan B. Anthony Amendment, guaranteeing the women the right to vote, on May 21, 1919. The U.S. Senate, two weeks later, approved the 19th Amendment. The amendment then went to the states for ratification, and Tennessee became the last state needed to ratify this amendment, giving it three-quarters of the then-existing 48 states. On August 26, 1920, a proclamation declared the 19th Amendment ratified and part of the United States Constitution. Today, more than 80 million women are registered to vote. This centennial gives lawyers, judges, state and local bar associations, educators, local government officials, and civic organizations the opportunity to educate the public about the 19th Amendment, and about the importance of promoting the equal exercise of the right to vote and participate in our democracy. It is an honor for me to serve as the Provo City Municipal Justice Court Judge. I am privileged to work with my fellow judges in helping to improve the quality of life in our communities. I currently serve as the Chair of the Utah Justice Court Judges Board, the Presiding Fourth District Court Judge, and the Education Committee Chair in our district. I am grateful for the chance to work with so many dedicated and capable fellow workers. Our staff has weathered the changes brought to our court procedures by the coronavirus pandemic with great dexterity and great efficiency. Thank you for the opportunity to give this annual report on our Provo City Justice Court. Thank you for your support of our justice court. I am grateful to serve with such dedicated people, who are committed to providing quality service for our court customers. Are there any questions which I could answer for you?
Thank you, Judge Romney. Any questions? We sure appreciate you and all the good work that you do, and all the wonderful people that work with you. We recognize that you're, as we all are, working under unusual circumstances right now, and we appreciate your conscientious way of approaching that.
Thank you very much for this chance.
You bet. We love hearing from you. Thank you so much. We'll now open it up for public comment, and I will ask Cliff Strack and our Executive Director to explain how that will work.
Thank you, Chair Hanley. There are three types of items for which public comment will be received. The first is the open public comment period. The council will allow up to 15 minutes for public comments on matters that do not appear on tonight's agenda. The second is for items that require a public hearing. For these items, time will be provided for all those who wish to speak. The third is for items on the agenda that do not require a public hearing. The council will allow up to 15 minutes for comments on each item. Because the city council is meeting virtually using Zoom webinar, and this meeting is being broadcast on the Provo City Council's YouTube channel, we have enabled telephone access to receive public comment, the numbers for which will be shown on screen during the meeting. Callers may have to try multiple numbers to get connected. When a caller is connected, they will be required to enter the meeting ID and enter the pound symbol. When asked for a personal ID number, enter pound. The caller will now enter the meeting as an attendee, and will be able to hear the meeting while muted. If a caller wishes to speak on the item being discussed, they can press star nine to indicate their desire to comment, and then wait to be called upon. Callers will be called upon by the last four digits of the listed phone number. Please provide your name and city of residence before making your comments. Each caller will be given up to two minutes to speak. A timer will be posted on screen, and a beep should be audible to the caller when their time is up. A reminder that there is a lag of approximately 30 to 60 seconds between the meeting and the broadcast. To avoid confusion, callers should mute the YouTube or Facebook broadcast to hear the discussion in real time. The open public comment period starts now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Strack. And we'll wait just a minute to see if we have any callers. Again, you would press star nine if you wish to speak. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the council to begin the rest of our deliberations this evening. We'll start on an implied motion on item number three, which is a joint resolution of the Provo City Mayor and Municipal Council outlining support for the Provo City School District General Obligation Bond. And Mr. Strack, do you want to introduce this item?
This item is simply a response to the council's desire to support the Provo School District's bond by rebuild Timview High School, and it is a resolution basically saying that, and that's all I have for you.
Okay. All right. We'll open it up for public comment. If there's anybody who would like to make a comment on this item, you need to call All right, seeing no comment from the public on this, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion, and I would like to clarify that in speaking with the administration, I know we continued this item in order to give more time for deliberation about this, and I understand that the mayor would like some more time to consider this independently, and so I would like to make a substitute motion to replace the joint resolution with a resolution that is a council resolution. So it's essentially the same wording that would be the item we would discuss and vote on this evening. So I'll look for a second on that substitute motion. All right, thank you, Mr. Sewell. Is there any discussion about this motion? Mr. Hoben, and then Mr. Harding?
Well, so I'm not sure if this is out of place, but I actually had some concerns about the resolution in general. So I guess I would be okay moving forward with it being a resolution, but then I would like to address, not being a joint resolution, but then I would like to address the resolution. So should I voice my concerns now, or would that be the next step?
Let's make that the next step, so we decide whether or not we're going to go forward with the substitute motion, and then we can discuss the merits of that. Mr. Harding, did you want to make a comment?
Sure. I support moving it from a joint resolution to a resolution.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call for a vote on the substitute motion, and I will start. Yes, Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore seems to be off camera and muted. Did he step away for a moment? Do we know? Keep going here, Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
All right. Voting, a motion, let's see. So, sorry, I'm distracted there. I don't see Mr. Fillmore, so we'll excuse him from that vote. The voting was unanimous. So now we can talk about the resolution solely by the council that we've proposed. So, Mr. Hoben, did you want to start that?
I feel like I'm kind of being a party pooper lately, trying to dissuade you all from doing things here, but I appreciate the opportunity to share my opinion. So I thank you so much for giving me a couple of weeks to do some research on the bond. And I actually, if you look at the bond, it makes sense. I think you've got, it's going to be the cheaper solution of the two that the school board is considering, and there's really not an option at this point of not repairing the school. So, you know, it's going to happen. So I think the merits of the bond are, you know, arguably, I think most people are going to be in favor for it. One concern I had was when I took the last couple of weeks to have conversations with the constituents in my district, most of them, I would say almost all of them, were not even aware that a bond was occurring, that there was, you know, another bond. And a lot of them, their first reaction was, "A bond? No." And then when I had planned, "Okay, here's why," and they were like, "Okay, well, I'll do some research on it, but it sounds like it's more reasonable and makes sense." But I did have a concern, and I do have a concern, I guess, with that initial reaction, because I feel like there needs to be more information out there. I'm not sure if it's really our place to lead out on this. If I look, you know, look at what the school board has done to communicate it, I couldn't find anything on the school district's Facebook page with any information about the bond, any posts. There was a post by one school board member, Nate Bryson, did a great post about the bond, but there weren't by any other school board members, at least that I could find, you know, informational posts. On the school district website, you have to really search for it. It's in the news section, but it's not a prominent feature on their website, so you really have to look for it. Haven't received, as I recall, with the last bond, there was a lot of communication, and, you know, it was a bigger bond, of course, but, yeah, I haven't received any text messages or emails with information about this bond. So I just feel like, I just, it seems a little out of place for us to lead out on this. I feel like I want the school board to, you know, kick off a public information campaign and, you know, kind of take the lead on it, and then if we're like baking a cake here, we're the icing on the cake, right? You know, they do a lot of the substance. If this were the Tour de France, they're the ones riding the bike, but we're the one driving in the car behind, you know, fixing tires and stuff. We're there to support. I don't really feel like it's our place to kind of lead out, to be the ones pushing the message. I'd like for the school board to get some more information out there, because when we put a resolution out there, I think there's going to be a lot of misinformation, and I think it would be, our resolution would be better served when there's a better understanding and a more informed public. And then, you know, basically, the school board can do a good job of delivering the message and informing, and then we can kind of come in and support that message as opposed to leading out. I understand that a resolution would do a lot to get the information out there. It just doesn't seem like it's our place. It feels like the school should really be leading the effort and we supporting that. At this point, we would really be the first ones out of the gate with this message, and something about that doesn't sit well. You know, this is their initiative, and I feel like we should support it, but not be leading out on it.
Mr. Harding?
I would agree with much of what Mr. Hoben is saying, as far as, you know, the intended, the intention is to support the school district and to, you know, we all want the public to be informed about what the bond is about, the reasons for it, the alternatives, if it's not passed. And, you know, I agree, we should do whatever's going to be the most effective. I don't mind as much, you know, if the school board needs more help getting the word out, I don't mind giving a hand with that. I don't, I guess I don't mind leading out as much. I don't necessarily see it as much as leading out, just as this is a fairly timely announcement, since we're, you know, a little more than a month away from the election, and people are going to be marking their ballots even sooner than that. So, you know, Mr. Hoben gives a convincing argument, and I think we all want the same thing, but we talked about this with the school board, what, three weeks ago or so? And they said they would welcome a statement, so I'm good moving forward with it tonight. If the council feels like it would be better to hold off a couple of weeks or whatever until the school board has a better chance to get the word out, I'll go along with that as well. I just, I do strongly support the bond as proposed, and, you know, I would like to let anyone that we have influence on to say that we have looked at this, and we do feel like it is responsible to vote yes on this bond.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I agree with the comments of both of my colleagues. I personally support this bond. I think it's important. I think it's a wise and urgent thing to do, but I really haven't seen the school board, I'm sorry, the school district board, educate or promote or tell citizens about what they're trying to accomplish, and I'm not sure that we are going to be as effective if we get ahead of them. So I'd like them to make some initiative and show their initiative in promoting this bond, if that's what they're going to do. If they're not going to promote this bond, if they're not going to educate the voters, if they're not going to let people know that this is important and that it's less expensive than the alternative option, then I am a little confused at why they want us to create this resolution. And I'm interested in any concerns or feedback that the administration has in a different resolution or in this resolution.
So can I maybe get a little bit of clarification on this? My understanding is that the school board is a little bit hamstrung in the same way that we are, that once you pass a bond or place a bond on the ballot, that they have to rely on citizens, and if they're going to get, in order to promote it, they've posted an argument about the bond, which is readily available on their website, but I recognize that, my understanding is that they are under some of the same kinds of restrictions that we would be or have been, for example, even with the referendum or with our bond, our city bond previously, and it requires, you know, an independent organization to do that kind of publicity. So I don't, I'm not entirely concerned with where the state of the publicity concerned with where the state of the publicity is right now. We're also coming up on two, two months, a little less than two months away. And I guess we're getting a visual of, of the information that's available to the public right now on their website. So I, I'm, I'm not really persuaded that that's, that's an issue. They asked for our help. They gave our help on the city center bond. And it's not just a, you know, quid pro quo sort of thing. It's, this is in our interest as a community that we, we see this through. I think it's better for the community financially, it's better for the community in terms of the safety of our children. And so I think it's, it's, it's something that I'm very strongly supportive of and would hope that we would come together on this and support it together. Mr. Fillmore? You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say I'm in full support of the resolution. We have a symbiotic relationship, I believe, between city government and the government of the school district. We're both interrelated, we're interdependent. I just think one of the highest duties any city has is to provide for a proper education as children. I think most everybody knows that there's no question about the need for this. It's always just been about the cost. And there are parts of Timpview High School around the verge of being condemned. There have been, I think, seven or eight different studies over the past couple of years, and every single one of them indicates this has to be done. And so I applaud the school board for putting this plan forward. I think that if we wait, it's just going to be more expensive, and we put our kids at risk because of some of the dangerous situations there. Nonetheless, I'm sensitive to what Councilor Hoben says. I would like to see the school district lead out with a better educational effort. And so I'm, you know, I, I don't know that it's for us to take the lead. We certainly are in a supportive role and want to see this thing succeed. So I would be, I would be okay passing the resolution tonight, if that's the sense of the council. Or I'd be okay waiting two weeks if that allows the school board to step forward and get their educational campaign revved up a little more. I could go either way. But in any event, I will support it.
Mr. Hoben?
So thank you, Mr. Schracken. He showed the webpage. The webpage is out there. It does appear that a link was, was just posted sometime today. So I stand corrected. There is a, a link, a prominent link on the front of the school board's webpage to the information now, which is great. I still am very hesitant to, to, you know, jump in on this right now. And I guess to address your, what you were saying, Mr. Hanley, about they're, they're not really hamstrung. They, they can do informational sessions, they can, similar, so similar to what they did on the last bond. They can do open houses, they can post, so the school board members can actually post from their own private accounts, you know, in support of the bond, or they can post from, from any Facebook account, information about the bond. They can send out text messages with information, emails with information. They can do a mailer with information. They did all of this for the previous bond. And I recognize this one's not as big, but I, I haven't seen, you know, I haven't even seen a Facebook post from them on their, on their Facebook page. I understand they're focused on COVID. I just, I just wanted to, to make sure that, you know, there's a clear understanding of what they can do. So I, I appreciate what everybody's saying. I just, I would need to see more from the school board on this. There needs to be a foundation of information, a base that we can then build upon. You know, with this being their initiative, I don't think we'll do a great service or a great, you know, a great job of of trying to build that foundation and be the ones really spreading the information. So I guess, you know, I would, I would propose that we look at this, the second meeting in October. By then, the voter information packet will be out. I'm sure that the school board will have done some sort of mailer, some sort of informational campaign. Probably, you know, have a, have a Facebook campaign going for it or, or something, you know, to provide more information. So that would be what I would like to do.
Is that a motion? Because right now, we have an implied motion on the, on the resolution. Mr. Harding, did you want to make a comment? Sorry, let me just ask Mr. Harding.
Yeah, sure. I just wanted to point out that ballots will be in mailboxes October 12th. And so some of our populace may have already voted by the time we meet for the second time in October.
Let me, and I mean, I would just say, I think a resolution is, is kind of a, seems to be a pretty low risk and low, low maintenance. We're not, we're not doing any of the work for the, the school board that they will need to do between now and November. We're just providing an indication of our support of their needs. So again, I, my preference would be to just go ahead and pass it tonight. I don't, I don't know that there's anything that's going to, at least for me, there's anything that's going to happen between now and two weeks from now that would change my mind about the need. I think the question before us isn't, is the school board doing the kind of publicity they should be doing? The question is, does the school board's ballot need our support? And I think it does. Mr. Harding, you have a hand up?
Thank you. I, I agree. I'd, I'd prefer to vote tonight on this, but if, if continuing it gives us, you know, more unanimous support for the resolution, I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but I don't believe we have a meeting in two weeks. I believe it's in three weeks. I believe it's on October 6th. And so that would allow us to put in the resolution or to, to release the resolution before anyone has a chance to vote on it. It also allows the, the, the school board and the school district to, to mount more of a campaign, if, if that's what allows some counselors to feel more comfortable in voting for the resolution. But again, my preference would be to vote on it tonight, but perhaps that is a compromised position.
Mr. Sewell? You're muted.
Thank you. I feel like the more unified we are, the stronger the message would be. So I would also be in favor of the October 6th, if that would help more counselors to be supportive. And I would also invite the mayor, I don't know if she's made up her mind on this, if that's still a possibility that she would join us, but I would love it if that's still a possibility.
I'll go back to the question. We have an implied motion. So is there a motion? Substitute motion? I don't, Mayor, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, you know how I am with resolutions, and I take this very serious. And and because I've been, again, as busy as all of you, I have a meeting set up with Board Member Jensen next week, and I asked him to please walk me through this. And because before I put my name to anything, I need to understand all the impacts on the property tax, et cetera, everything that it's going to mean to the citizens. Even at an event Friday, I had two people ask me about it and wondered if there was even a bond because they hadn't heard anything. So I just feel like I need to really get my mind wrapped around it with Board Member Jensen. So I, I'm already set and ready to go and, and open to learning, and I'll let you know how it goes and, and what I decide.
Thank you. Mr. Hoben?
Well, I was going to do a substitute motion then, that we continue this until the October 6th meeting. So that would be the motion. And then in the meantime, what I'll do is I'll talk to as many school board members as I can to see if we can, you know, get a better understanding what their public information campaign will look like and, and such. That's not part of the motion, but just taking the opportunity to make sure everybody knows that I'll do my part to help move this forward so that we can move forward with the resolution on the 6th.
Mr. Sewell?
I'd like to second the motion and look forward to the possibility that Mr. Hoben and the mayor might, might join us in this.
All right. Any further discussion of the substitute motion? To continue this until the 6th of October? All right, I'll call for a vote then. I'll begin with Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the voting is unanimous. Okay, well, we'll look forward to those conversations, especially for those of you who feel you need, need that extra time. But it does seem like that will, that will probably be the last point, right? Think of being able to settle this definitively. So let's keep that a target in mind, I think. All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number four, which is an implied motion on an ordinance amending public city code to clarify amenity space requirements for developments with 20 or more residential units in the interim transit-oriented development or ITOD zone. Citywide application is presented by Dustin Wright, City Planner.
All right, thank you. So this is an amendment that the city Development Services Department has been looking at to help add some clarity to our existing code for open recreation space in the ITOD zone. And our existing code has a reference to providing 20% of the site to open space and doesn't provide much more clarity to that. So what we're looking to do is to bring this more in line with our other downtown zones, the DT1 and DT2 zones. And to, so here's a, here's our existing code and the proposed code. So we're looking to make it apply to residential units, projects that have more than 20 residential units. Will need to provide 10% of that residential floor area to be amenity space. Along with that, it gives some more details as to what doesn't count as this open space. So remnant parcels or remnant portions of the, of the parcel wouldn't count towards that. Or other required landscaping wouldn't count towards that. It would be a specific area that's designed and dedicated for a gathering space for recreation, such as a clubhouse or a gym or a pool or something of that nature. So adding this in there will help add that clarity as to what's being expected on new development to, to provide for amenity space. The Planning Commission took a look at this and forwarded a positive recommendation with a few changes, which we've included in the the version that's in the report of action to help add some clarity to, to the language that we have here. So that's essentially what we're looking to do with this ordinance amendment, to just really add some clarity and some guidelines as, as far as the open space, amenity space goes for ITOD zone and to have it be more in line with our other downtown zones. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, any questions? Okay, this item is open for public comment, so I'll see if there's any public comment. Give it a minute. Please call in and then press star nine if you wish to make a comment. Wait just a minute here. All right, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Is there any discussion from the council on this item? Mr. Harding?
I think there's a lot to like. I think there's a lot to like about this proposal to bring all of our amenity spaces for similar zones all onto the, using the same language, bring uniformity to that. I think that's a strong positive, so I'm supportive of this.
All right, any other discussion or question? This is the first time this has been heard by the council, so does any council member desire to consider this item again at the next council meeting? Okay, if not, then I will call for a vote on the implied motion. We can begin with Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
I will vote yes. And Mr. Harding?
Yes.
And the voting is unanimous. All right. Item number five, which is an implied motion on an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 2.31 acres at 4100 North Canyon Road and 3.42 acres at 3956 North Canyon Road from Residential Agriculture RA to Residential R110 North Timpview Neighborhood. And this will be presented by Aaron Ardmore, City Planner.
Thank you, Council, for the time to present this. So this is, let me go to the map here. So this is a rezon request, which is essentially kind of a infill. If you got this here now. If you look at the areas that are cited for the zone map amendment from RA to R110, there are areas that are circled in red that are currently residential agriculture. The property to the north here isn't included. The developer doesn't have control of that property at this time, so he's just zoning these two areas in anticipation of plat that will be coming into the city for review. This is kind of a conceptual plan to go along with the zone change. However, the lots proposed meet, here's updated version, the lots proposed meet the Arleton zoning. So Steph is confident that the zone fits to the area and that the applicant has showed that the subdivision in the future can meet the zone. So we're happy to support this and provide additional housing in this neighborhood. The Planning Commission also supported the rezon request with unanimous eight to zero vote. I think that's all I have on this one. If you have any questions, I, I can take those.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ardmore. Any questions for Mr. Ardmore from the council before we open it up for public comment? Okay, we'll open it up then for public comment if anyone wishes to call in. Call in on the number that should be posted here, and, and then dial star nine if you wish to speak. Give it a minute. All right, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Ms. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I've, I've expressed my concerns before on this project and on other projects and I won't be voting for it. We're still exacerbating the problem that we have in Provo of economic and socioeconomic segregation. And this is just falling into that pattern. If this were a smart infill project, we would see more density here. We would see a different type of housing. And if this were a project that came up in my area, it would be very well supported. But if we, you know, what we're seeing a lot in my area is LDR. And if, if LDR could be in this parcel, that would be phenomenal. And when LDR is proposed in my area and I say we have a lot of LDR, people say, well, we need more housing for all of the people who are moving to Utah Valley. And I agree, we do need more housing for all the people who are moving to Utah Valley. And this is a prime infill project where we could put LDR, where we could put more families, more families could find a home in Provo if it were not such low density. And it would create diversity of housing in an area that does not have diverse housing. I think it's, it's unsustainable to keep doing what we've always done. I think we're creating a rich side of Provo and a south side of Provo, and we're doing exactly that with this project.
Mr. Hoben?
So Ms. Ellsworth, I am genuinely curious. I've heard a lot about, you know, higher density needs to be closer to the center of the city as you move out. It strains infrastructure to have higher density, and I'm not even saying high, high density, but anyways, we're supposed to scale density from the center of the city out supposedly, so that you have less people traveling in into the city or to the center of the city where most work and commerce takes place or whatever. So it would seem like, you know, the lower density should be further out and the higher density should be closer in. Now, this isn't that far out, but anyway, I'm curious about your opinion, just big picture on that type of philosophy that, you know, higher density belongs here, lower dense yeah, out here, it's less strain on infrastructure and such. Thoughts?
Yeah, no, that is a planning best practice, right? But that's talking over large geographic area. So you wouldn't put in, you know, 200 townhomes in Janola, Utah, because there's not good infrastructure there, any kind of structure there. But Provo is the center of Utah Valley. Our population is higher than any city in the county. It's the third largest in the state. This is an infill project, so we're not leapfrogging development by any stretch of the imagination. It's on a major collector. I'm not sure if that's its official designation, but it's on a significant road. It's within a mile of Days Market. And I think this is a phenomenal spot for a diverse housing style, something that's LDR. It doesn't even have to be multifamily. It doesn't have to be apartments. But it, it does not accommodate different, different people in different lifestyles or people in a different life cycle, different part of the life cycle. So, yeah, you're exactly right. Where there is infrastructure, where there is transit, where there are amenities and grocery stores, that is the best place to put density. And we have all of that in Provo. So there's really not a place in Provo that couldn't handle this, except for areas where there is not enough sewer. So, yeah, that's my, that's my opinion as well as my professional opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fillmore? You're muted.
My own opinion on this, Mr. Chairman, is that this development would fit very nicely in that neighborhood. And I don't think that low density concerns in one area of the city should necessarily block a good project in another part of the city. This development would have no adverse effect on any other part of the city. This is strictly on Canyon Road. And frankly, there's more low and medium density in the northeast part of town than I think sometimes given credit for. But I think that low density, as Councilor Hoben has said, the best place to put that is near city centers and transportation hubs as opposed to planting it in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So I'm very much in favor of this.
I'd actually maybe like to ask Mr. Ardmore or Mr. Pepperoni about that, because my impression is similar. I mean, there's, there's quite a bit of higher density housing just across University Avenue and just a little bit farther south and east of there. There are a number of townhomes and higher density clusters. I mean, it may not be to the same degree as southeastern Provo, but, but it's not that this area is void of those. And given the concerns that Ms. Ellsworth raised, which I think are really important to consider, I'm just wondering if Mr. Ardmore has a response to that or any clarification that might be helpful to us?
Yeah, I, I think you hit on it. The Riverwoods area has increased its density on a pretty good scale in the last several years with the townhomes and apartments being built around that area. Along University Ave, in that northern area, you have also got old Ivy townhomes. You've got different developments that are more than single family detached.
That's justified, because that's another hub.
Right. These are, these are active areas with, with mixed use. And even without that mixed use and commercial centers in the northeast towards the Rock Canyon, you've got twin homes and some townhomes, condo projects up there. So I think there is a mix in the northeast. It's just, you do have these clusters, like Ms. Ellsworth was speaking about, you do have these clusters of single family detached. And I think that's pretty typical as you branch out from the city and where you don't have as much commercial and transit options, you get more of the single family detached. But, but it is on the mind of, of planning staff to try to diversify the neighborhoods and and make sure that one neighborhood isn't getting all of the increase in density as we move forward.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Fillmore's comments. In no way am I trying to block this development because of a different part of town, and I don't think it will impact a different part of town. My concern is that across the city, we need diverse housing types, and this is not, to me, creating diverse housing types. One of the reasons, probably the most significant reason I've been told that the, the staff like the neighborhood plans that the city does is because they require each neighborhood to come up with some kind of affordable or accessible or entry level housing. And I think there's an opportunity for that here. I think there's a lot of different infill projects that if we allowed some kind of innovation and creation and some more density, we could see different, better products that our citizens would really appreciate. And I feel like we are, again, exacerbating socioeconomic divides.
Mr. Sewell?
I feel like there's a high demand for this type of housing in this area and, and that it would be a good fit. Also, as has previously been mentioned, the mass transit connections are very poor in this area, and so I, I feel like it is a good, a good place for this type of housing.
I would just ask that the council consider something similar in the southeast area when a new multifamily development is presented to this group. There is not transit in southeast Provo. So if that is a guiding principle of this body, there are nearby amenities and transit, please note that that does not exist in southeast Provo.
Mr. Harding?
Can we see that the slide of the updated conceptual plan? I'm reviewing, I'm just looking at the kind of a map of the area and I'm looking at the previous slides. And so, so do I understand correctly that, that the area that we're looking to rezone covers like Lot One, it looks like through seventeen, basically the, the lower the, the kind of the southern portion of that double cul-de-sac?
That's correct.
Okay, and so, so the original one, the, the original conceptual plan, at least that's in the, the slides from the planning commission, looks like that was mispositioned then, because that, that shows it covering a lot of the land that we're, that's not being rezoned, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct. One of the slides had overlay in the wrong spot.
Okay, thank you.
It should be down here.
Okay, thank you. So I, I'm really torn on this. I, I do strongly believe that our neighborhoods, our communities will be stronger. Not just like, hey, who gets, who gets the share of this type of housing or whatever, but I truly believe that all of our neighborhoods will be stronger if we have a, a broader diversity of housing within the neighborhoods, not just, you know, some spread out, but I mean, the more, the more that it's integrated, the more that it's mixed, that the stronger it will be. I mean, every neighborhood, and not, I'm not, not talking about the official neighborhoods, but every, every neighborhood as, as people feel it, I believe should have some, some, some starter homes, should have some move up homes, should have some, you know, homes that people move into after their, their families are gone. This, this really, you know, in, in one person, in one way to look at it, it creates sustainable neighborhoods. Neighborhoods where people can stay their whole life cycles, or, you know, they can move from one to another, but every neighborhood kind of contains a cross section of the whole. And then we, we avoid some of the, some of the problems that can be caused as neighborhoods cycle through. If, if everyone moves in all at the same time, all in the same stage of life and and move through it together, that, that causes strains on our, all of our community institutions. So I, I strongly believe that, and I'm, I'm looking at this area and, and we've talked about pocket neighborhoods. We've talked about some of these more innovative approaches and and then this actually looks like a good spot for some of that. So, so I, you know, from that perspective, I kind of want to say no, I, I don't think that the zoning R110 is, is the best thing to do for this, this area. The problem I have is, is that there's so much momentum for this already. We have a unanimous recommendation by the, the planning commission who also grappled with some of these same issues that we're talking about, but ended up deciding to unanimously recommend it to us. We have a staff recommendation. They are also aware of, you know, these, these issues that we're, we're discussing. There's also just some community expectation. It's, it's difficult when, you know, councils change or when ideas change and, and the, the leadership of the, the city kind of swings from, from one position to another position quickly. That, that, that causes a lot of consternation among the residents who, who, you know, have expectations and, and have heard certain things over the years and then, and then for us to fairly abruptly change direction. You know, that's difficult. On the other hand, if, if, if we're not willing to pivot ever, you know, if we always just kind of keep doing what we've done in the past, then, you know, we're, we're not going to, you know, we're never going to change our, our direction. And I think it's, I think best practices, I think, you know, there, there's a lot to convince us that making some of the same decisions we have in the past are not going to work as well in the future as we get to a different stage. So I'm genuinely torn on this. I, I kind of want to vote no, just, just because I think we can do better. But it's, it's difficult to do so at such a late stage in the, in the process. So I, I don't know where I'm, I'm going to vote on this.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I just really appreciate Mr. Harding's nuance and would echo his comments that this is not about perfectly distributing housing types through our city. That's not necessarily the objective. The objective is to create sustainable neighborhoods that have diverse families and ages that can support the institutions of our community for, for more than one generation. I think it creates a stronger, more cohesive, more interesting and sustainable neighborhood. And that's why people need different types of housing, so that when they retire and want to downsize, they don't have to leave all of their friends in that area, but they can find something suitable within a mile of their home or within a half mile of their home. And that is my intent, that the citizens of Provo can have safe, healthy, quality housing in any quadrant of the city. And that they can find something that suits their, their point in life in any quadrant of the city. And that's why I think it's so important that we figure out some of these housing issues, which I admittedly am working on with the Housing Committee. But this is the role of the council to be the land use authority and I understand that this kind of development would continue the pattern that already exists. But it's okay if we disrupt that. It's okay if we create a new product for new citizens who have different needs. I think that that's in demand across the city.
I'd like to make a comment. I think, I think I'm very, very much appreciate this discussion. I think it's very important. I think what I'm not convinced of is that we have enough information about the distribution of the housing types in that area. I think we're making an assumption that I don't think is necessarily going to be backed up if we look closely at that part of the city. I mean, I'm just doing an eyeball glance at it, and there are lots of higher density housing areas very close to that area. So I, I think what, I think what looks like the type that we're talking about is that this is two parcels in the middle of single detached family home, so it's consistent with the immediate neighborhood. But it's, I, I just don't think we have enough data. We're, we're kind of going on instinct here, making eyeball guesses, and I think I'd rather have more information about the distribution of housing types in this part of the city to, to, before assuming that, that this is too much of the same thing. We are, and this is the first time this item's come before the council, so maybe I'll just go ahead and ask the obvious question, and that is if there's any council member who desires to consider this item again at the next council meeting, and maybe that would determine whether or not getting more information on that kind of a question, for example, would be helpful to, in our, to our deliberations or not. Mr. Harding, you had a hand up?
Thank you, and, and I'll, I'll go ahead and indicate my desire to to have at least a second hearing on this. And I see we've got some more graphics on, on screen, so that's helpful as well. So I'm just mulling this over more. I think my preference would be to continue this, which I, I've already, I guess, requested at least a three week continuation. But what, what are the, talking about consistency, one of the reasons why that's so important is so that developers can kind of come in, they can see, okay, this is what the city is asking for, and, and they should be able to have a, a safe you know, it should be a safe assumption that if they propose what we're asking them to propose, then it should move through with, with not too much difficulty. And so we may have a developer here that, that they're proposing R110, because that's kind of what we've signaled that we're, that we would like to see. You know, and giving it a little bit more time might allow that, you know, and particularly if we indicate that we're interested in maybe a little bit more mix of, of housing types, they might, might be willing to propose something. They may, they may actually prefer to, to propose something a little bit more diverse, but they were, they were just trying to do what we were asking them, what we've asked them to do in the past. And, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to know how open neighbors are to something new, but you know, if, I, I have seen some are to something new, but, um, you know, if, I, I, I have seen some really well-put-together proposals that aren't the same, um, as what's around it, but can get the, the neighbors to, to look at that and say, oh, well, yeah, I can actually see myself moving into something like that in a few years, um, you know, when I'm, when I'm tired of, of taking care of my yard. Um, so, we might, just by, by signaling to the developer and signaling to the neighborhoods that, that we're interested, or we, we, we'd like to at least explore the idea of something different, that, that we might find, we might kind of find a win-win solution, we might find something that, that everyone would actually prefer. So, hopefully, hopefully s- uh, staff can, can talk to the applicant in the next three weeks, um, and at least, you know, judge their, you know, get a, get some feedback on, on their thoughts on that.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I also would be supportive of continuing it. Um, I, I may change my mind. Uh, we may find data that indicates that there is plenty alternative housing types that aren't R10 or R8. Um, so, yeah, I, I'm always appreciative of more information, and, um, hopefully staff can provide us with some kind of, some kind of heat map, or indication of how their, this distribution is, is, uh, is falling into different parts of the city.
All right, uh, so we have had a request then for continuing in this item, um, which will automatically continue this item until the next regularly scheduled meeting, um, uh, unless someone would want to make a motion to put it on a different date, but otherwise we'll plan on it on October 6th. Any further discussion of this, uh, this item? Okay, we appreciate, uh, Mr. Ardmore. Um, I, I hope, I hope at least we have been, um, clear about what could help us here. It seems to me, um, just maybe some further conversations with the developer, as well as, um, a little more information about distribution of housing types, um, might be helpful to us, um, the next time around. All right, thank you. Okay, we'll, uh, move on then to item number six, which is an implied motion on an ordinance amending Chapter 9.25 and related sections of the Provo City Code. Uh, this is, um, says it, I, I'm presenting this, um, but I, and that's news to me, but I, I think what, um, we had, uh, Mr. Jones walk through the proposed changes, um, that had been previously discussed, and I don't know if you want to say anything more, Mr. Jones, to quickly outline those, or, um...
Yeah, I'd love to do that. Sorry, it always takes me a minute to get unmuted, because my computer setup is that my, the screen that has, the laptop that has the camera on it can only be right in front of where my mouse needs to go to unmute myself, so I can never see how to do it. I have myself all over my desk. Anyway, I apologize for that. Um, let me go ahead and share my screen and go through this one more time, just for, um, those that might be, uh, watching and not have, um, not have seen the earlier discussion. Just need to wait till they get sheet, screen sharing abilities. Who needs to grant me the power to do that? Well, I guess in the interest of time, let me just try to summarize. I can't, uh, I can't get, have screen sharing rights at the moment.
Brian, I'll share my screen, and then you can, uh, control it from there.
Okay.
I apologize, I forgot that Elizabeth made me host as she left tonight, so you should now have the ability to do that.
Looks like I now do, okay. So, let me go ahead and do that. Okay, so, um, this ordinance just makes, uh, a few mostly clarifying changes to the already existing ordinance. I, you know, I was asked a couple of questions kind of during the break about, about the impact of this on, on the existing ordinance. The existing ordinance is already on the books, that ordinance is already, um, in, in effect. So, this is a new ordinance and is, for those who, who have this question, is subject to both veto and referendum, but those vetoes and referendum efforts, if they were to happen, would only affect the changes and wouldn't do anything to the underlying ordinance. So, all they would do is undo these changes that clarify things and leave the ordinance as it currently is, in case anyone had a question about that. So, let me just go through and explain what the changes are. First, in the purpose section here, um, we just recommended deleting some of the extraneous language that is basically repetitive of what the rest of the chapter says. Um, so, maybe making that section a little bit more simple. Um, let's see, this, not sure why this happened. Um, this is actually an addition instead of a deletion, so let me see if I can change that. Okay, so, um, the idea here in, in this section is to clarify that, uh, this particular section, Sub 20, only applies to indoor public spaces. It cross-references the exemption, exemptions later, just to draw attention to those exemptions. It, it, uh, changes areas accessible to the public to the phrase indoor public spaces, and then down here defines what that means, and clarifies that it doesn't mean the interior or private dwellings. And some language that was, uh, added in the work session today, um, makes clear that the important thing is not whether social distancing is possible, but whether the people are actually social distancing. Um, in Section 30, uh, the only thing that's been added here are cross-references to the exemptions, again, just to call attention to them, and then some subsection headings to clarify that subsection one applies to indoors, two to outdoors, and three to gathering organizers. And then again, some, uh, language to clarify that the important thing is whether social distancing is being observed, not, not whether it's possible or not. In Section 40 regarding exemptions, there's some clarification to the medical exemption, uh, to make it a little bit less onerous, where before it said, yeah, that your condition had to prevent wearing a face covering. This just says, if, uh, you have an exemption, if wearing a face covering is not possible reasonably prudent. Uh, subsection eight is proposed to be amended to, uh, clarify that the physical, physical activity exemption applies to athletic events, training and practices, and the discretion of the coaches or administrators. And subsection nine is a new exemption proposed to be added, uh, to cover those who are addressing or performing for a large public gathering if they are socially distancing, uh, from the rest of the, rest of the group. And then subsection, or Section 50 regarding posting, was clarified a little bit to make sure, to make clear that it applies to businesses that are operating in, in an indoor public space. And, see this. This should be a strike through. One of our, uh, issues is that our program here that we use for processing our, um, for processing our documents does not accept track changes, so I'll be a little bit of an issue here with...
Brian, if you'd like to just make them with, uh, track changes, I can go in and clean it up later.
Okay, I think that was the last one, but, so I think we're good now. Um, and then, so these are just some clarifications about what the posting requirements are, and that, and that's all of the changes. Again, as in the work session, we have to answer questions on any of those things.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore. You're muted.
I was thinking that, uh, since most of these amendments came from my suggested amendments at our last meeting, maybe I ought to speak up first. Uh, subsequent to that meeting, I've had conversations with Mr. Jones, we talked the things over. Uh, he's talked me out of some for good reasons, and he's improved others. So, I very much appreciate his work, and I, I support the changes he's made. Uh, my, my primary concern, as the council knows, was hoping to eliminate the individual mask mandate penalty, which I, I'm opposed to philosophically and practically, but I think that ship has sailed. I, I would like to raise one other question, however. I still believe, if we're looking at, uh, Section 30, large public gatherings, I still believe that, uh, having different numbers for our large groups, 50 versus 25, is an unnecessary confusion in the public mind. Uh, I'd, I'd rather see that 50 and 50, so that people have that firmly in mind. When we raised that last, at our last meeting, that motion lost three to four, and I'm just wondering if anyone on the council might have changed their mind on that point. Uh, if so, I, I'd probably make a motion to amend if there was another vote. Uh, but I, I just think it's an unforced error, and then creates unnecessary confusion in the public mind.
Does anybody want to share, uh, I guess maybe to facilitate that discussion? I suppose the question is, if you have changed your mind, now would be a good time to speak. How's that?
Exactly, yeah. And if not, then that's that.
Okay. Mr. Harding?
I think-
Well, see, Mr. Hoben had his hand up, but I'm assuming that was about another issue, right? Okay, so go ahead, Mr. Harding.
Uh, I, I think there's value in, in having the same number, um, but just for the public safety, public health, um, I, I don't feel good about raising that outdoor number any higher. As was pointed out last time, you know, already 25 was higher than, than many, um, had wanted. That was already a compromised position, so I, I might be willing to vote to, to bring the numbers in line, as long as we were bringing them both to 25, rather than, um, raising them both to 50.
Ms. Ellsworth?
I feel similarly. I got a question from a citizen very recently that said, um, why is it 50 indoors and 25 outdoors? Because there's less likely, uh, it's less likely that you would, uh, the transmission would be lower outdoors. And I tried to explain the difference, and I don't think that, that it was really captured, so I would agree that we could bring it down to 25.
Well, I think he's proposing bringing, bringing both up to 50, sorry.
Well, I'd, I'd be interested, Mr. Chairman, in, in the opinions of the rest of the council, whether 50-50 versus 25 and 25.
Well, I've always been in favor of the up, uh, the, being more stringent on the indoor than the outdoor. I, um, so I, I, I was, I'm, I'm sort of where I was. I, I, I feel like if, um, I don't feel strongly enough about it to change it at this point, and I would, would have preferred all along anyway that the numbers would have been more generous for outdoor.
You've got, you've got three people going for 25 and 25. I'd be interested in the rest of the council's thoughts.
Mr. Hoben?
Uh, I, I'm, would prefer 50 and 50. I, I also think, I don't know if Mr. Jones wants comment on this, but I would, I'm a little concerned with, well, uh, I think there might be an issue if we get more restrictive in the ordinance at this point, um, given that there is a, a potential referendum in the works that, yeah, I, it's something to think about. I, I don't know, I think Mr. Jones commented on that. Um, plus it, you know, it might just be more bad publicity, that, um, you know, more fuel to the fire. I think we should lean towards less restrictive changes, or restrict, or changes that are non-substantive, um, you know, such as the ones we're making tonight. Most of the ones we're making tonight are, are non-substantive, but, uh, I do think the, you know, like the one accommodating speakers at the pulpit, um, you know, makes sense, it's less restrictive in that sense. So, I just bring that up. I mean, you guys know where I stand. I, I would, I would, you know, go, lean towards 50-50, of course, um, but I think there's a practical reason to not consider 25-25 for those who might be, might be interested in 20-25, 25-25.
Mr. Sewell? You're muted.
Thank you. I, I would just prefer to play it where it lies at this point. I'm very supportive of the, uh, changes that have been brought to us tonight, uh, from Mr. Fillmore and Mr. Harding. I think they're useful clarifications and improvements, but, uh, I think anything more, um, substantive should probably wait till we see what happens in, uh, October.
Mr. Harding?
Thank you. Um, I may have spoken too, too quickly. Uh, the, the argument of, you know, it, I would have preferred something like 20, 25-25, um, when we originally passed it, but I agree that, that making changes at this point, particularly making it a little more restrictive, I, I think is, causes too much, um, confusion. I think it's, it's better to make these clarifications, make these small, um, relaxations where, where it, it makes sense, but, um, but I, I agree, having the different numbers is non-ideal, um, but I think changing it probably causes more problems than it, than it improves. So, uh, I, I don't think I would support changing any of the numbers.
Okay.
Well, hi, Mr. Chairman. I, I withdraw the question, it wasn't a motion, but let's move on.
All right. Uh, is there any further discussion of the proposed amendments to the ordinance? Mr. Sewell?
Um, I just had a question for Mr. Jones in Section 50, if we could bring that up. Um, I'm just wondering, with the changes that we made today about the possible reasonable and prudent language, does this verbiage about the signage create an inconsistency there? What it, what is your opinion?
Yes, and when I was making Mr. Harding's changes, this wasn't in the list, and, and,
Having a little trouble hearing you, Brian.
Oh, I think that's an excellent question. When I was making Mr. Harding's changes earlier, this wasn't in the list of where that language was, and that's not his fault, because it, this language wasn't there previously, so this would need to be changed. Um, so let me maybe just change this really quick.
And to, to fill the dead space while he fixes that, if, if I may share, um, I, I want to thank Mr. Sewell for, for bringing that up. I was, I was, I was scrolling through my copy over here, trying to, trying to, uh, figure out what was going on with that, as well as, um, but I, I think, I think we've resolved that. I, I do have just a little concern that, um, you know, we've had time to review, uh, this, this, uh, version 4-1, uh, that was sent out to us earlier, and I think we've noticed a couple of spots where what's on the screen, um, you know, there was not the same as what was, um, what we had received previously. And, and so, I'm, I'm glad we caught those, those two, but I, I worry there might be another, um, another spot where what's on, what's officially on the screen is not what we reviewed earlier. So, I don't know if there's a way to do a quick compare, or, I don't know, I just, I would hate to vote on something and, and have just some inadvertent, um, you know, mistakes in it.
Yeah, if you'd like to give me a couple minutes, I could pull up the previous version. Like I said, I think the, the problem here is that I was previously using, um, uh, track changes, and when it got imported into OnBase, then, and it doesn't accept those, it doesn't show those. Let me give me just a minute, I will do a quick compare.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Can I just make a quick comment while we're waiting for Mr. Jones?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank everyone involved on the council and in the administration for all of your efforts on this, this issue. It's been the most intense and exhausting issue that I've come across in my work on the council. And I just appreciate everybody's efforts on this.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell. I think we all agree.
Okay. I've had a chance to look at those. It does now match with the exception of the change that we just made to section 53 in response to the question.
Okay. Mr. Harding.
I wanted to piggyback on Mr. Sewell's comment. I had an opportunity to meet with the administration just to talk about, you know, how this has been implemented, how it's been, you know, what has happened since this was passed and, and, you know, events that have occurred since then. And, you know, obviously, this is a contentious issue. Just having the mandate is, and then it's also contentious. You know, what's the best way and how it should be enforced and all of that. And in talking with them, I let them know that I felt like what they were doing was exactly what, at least I on the council was hoping that they would do, where, you know, 90 whatever percent of the effort is in education and encouragement. But then with kind of this backstop of enforcement. And, and, you know, we tied their hands with a lot of tools by making it only a civil penalty and all of that. But I do feel like they've made a good faith effort to, you know, to, to support this, this law that is in place. And so far, I think they've struck a good balance. I implore our residents, our community members to take the state guidelines seriously and to, you know, and to be good citizens and wear your masks when you're around other people. There's many circumstances that this ordinance does not cover. It does not require a mask, but it still would be, you know, is good and would be following the state guidelines to wear a mask. And I encourage everyone to wear masks. Find excuses to wear your mask rather than excuses to not wear your mask. And because that's, that's really what's important. But I just wanted to thank the administration for the way that they have carried out, you know, an ordinance that they, you know, would rather not have seen us pass. But I felt like they've given a good faith effort on that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. I echo those feelings. Very appreciative of the administration. I'm not surprised. I never expected anything but professionalism from them. So we appreciate it, but we appreciate the good communication that's happened as a result. Mr. Fillmore. I can't read. You're muted.
Just wanted to make the point that I think we need to bring this to a head tonight. And with the changes that are now before you, I would make a motion to approve this, these amendments to the ordinance.
It's an implied motion, so we don't, we don't need a second on that. It's already.
Have changes been made to it, though? Brian mentioned a change that had just been made.
Do we need to pass those changes, Brian?
And Brian, can you summarize those for us? Because staff missed it for notes.
Thanks, Hannah.
So the only change, so the only change that's been made since work session, there were changes made as a result of a motion in work session. And those were specifically with regard to the change to the language about maintaining social distancing instead of social distancing impossible. But because those changes were approved in work session, those are the only, the, those are the ones that were approved in the work session. So the implied motion would apply to all of those. The one that was made just now, really, I guess, has to do with the same thing, but wasn't specifically mentioned in, in the work session. And that's the same issue of about maintaining social distancing rather than it being possible in subsection 50. But I think it would probably be prudent to make a motion that the exhibit now before you be the subject of the implied motion and approve that motion before voting on the implied motion.
All right. So is that your motion, Mr. Fillmore?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
No, happily second.
Second by Mr. Harding. Any discussion? Or call for a vote? Mr. Fillmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hoben.
Yes.
Mr. Sewell.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Okay. So now we'll call, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion with this being the exhibit. Mr. Hoben, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just thought it might be good, since a lot has happened, to maybe emphasize to the public that might be watching, you know, all three of you out there, that there's, the only substantive change to this is that now somebody who's speaking at a pulpit or, you know, in church, we've clarified that that, that they wouldn't need to wear a mask. And then the other changes have been simply kind of cleaning up the language to clarify some things. And that, you know, things have not changed in regards to a sunset clause or, or any, anything else. So I think it's just important to maybe clarify that in case there were any questions out there.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. We'll begin with Mr. Hoben.
Yes.
Mr. Sewell.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore.
Yes.
All right. The voting is unanimous. All right. Well, our next item was continued, which means if there is no objection, we will now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council meeting by unanimous consent. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
Hey, George. Somebody just, somebody just texted me that there was no public comment. I don't recall if that's true or not.
You are correct. Or did I? Yes, I did neglect to do that.
Okay.
So if somebody would desire, I apologize about that.
So Chair, perhaps I can object to the adjournment?
Okay. All right. Duly noted.
Thank you.
We will, and I apologize to the public on that. I didn't remember that. So if there's somebody who would like to call in, I don't know if the staff can post the phone call information. And I'll wait a full minute.
Currently, there's no one in the attendee list, so see if anybody adds there.
Somebody texted me and said they need the numbers, but you, so maybe there will be one person calling in.
And while we're waiting, I suppose, to see if somebody does call in, because this question, I assume, will be coming. I would clarify, public comment is not required on this item. It's not a, it's not a public hearing. Public comment is something that is done customarily by the council to purposes of transparency and to get public feedback. If comments are made, I get my point being that nothing that's been done needs to be undone necessarily. But if public comment is made and it changes someone's mind, then a council member could make a motion to reconsider. And if that motion were seconded and passed, then that would undo the previous action and it could be considered again.
Mr. Hoben, could you text back that individual with one of the numbers?
Somebody's called in. So if you wish to speak, please press star nine. Okay. And now you can push star six. That should unmute you. Please go ahead.
Okay.
Oops. Sorry. Press star six one more time. I accidentally clicked your mute button. There you go. You there?
Okay, I'm here.
Wonderful. Go ahead.
All right. Well, I would just like to say regardless of all these old changes that you're making, the mask mandate is not constitutional. It's unconstitutional both on the state and federal level. It has always been and always will be illegal for the government to mandate medical treatment of any kind under any circumstances on any individual or their dependents, even if there is a legislation that claims to have created this power. Since masks are considered a medical Sorry?
Would you identify yourself for the council, please?
This is Marianne Nelson, the starter of the referendum. Since masks are considered a medical device, mandating masks would constitute mandating medical treatment and is therefore unconstitutional. There are three sections, the Fifth, the Ninth, and the Tenth Amendment that declare that it's unconstitutional. And the mandate was not even necessary because even without the mask mandate, over 90% of people in Provo were being compliant. With the mask mandate, in effect, there's been no significant difference in the percentage of people complying. Thus, pushing a mandate through has been a waste of city resources. Repealing the ordinance will be the only way we need, what we need to do to discourage you from trying to pass these types of unnecessary intrusive nanny state ordinances again. The Fifth Amendment says, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law." Liberty includes this right to choose your own medical treatment. The Ninth Amendment says inclusive of the right to choose your own medical treatment. The Tenth Amendment states that this power remains with the people. And the Utah Constitution also enumerates this right to liberty. So I hope that you will consider that as we gather the signatures and we will get enough signatures. We are very determined.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate your call and apologize that that wasn't accessible earlier. All right. So bring it back to the council. If there's any reason to reconsider anything that we voted on thus far, you're welcome to raise that concern. If not, if there is no objection, I will, we will now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council meeting by unanimous consent. Thank you. Have a good night.